Good to go.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is the meeting for the Titan Commission on Disability called to order on Thursday afternoon, the seventeenth of February, and I think it's about four thirty-four. Before we do anything else, I will ask that everybody have a moment of silence as opposed to pledge allegiance for anyone in our town who has been hit with COVID or any other disability or disease, or they have anyone who's passed away. All right, thank you very much. So if we could do the introductions, if we could, for those of us who are here, I'll start with myself. I am Jonathan Gale. I am the ADA Coordinator and Chair of the ADA Commission. Ken?
Yeah, I'm Ken Pacheco on the liaison for the ADA Commission.
Nicole?
Nicole Mello, voting member.
Kevin?
Kevin Smith, building member.
Thank you very, very much. So I wanted to keep this meeting short. We haven't met since December. For a variety of everyone's reasons, probably more mine than anything in terms of just not being able to make things work out, and I restructured my schedule so that I can always make it work on the first Thursday of the month going forward, no matter what. Then we can go back to that, and I apologize for all the between the holidays and everything else going on. I know everyone had busy schedules, but I think that was more me than more me than anything. So if we could start with old business, the middle school project, as everyone knows, and we were talking about before, has now been mostly completed. There are a couple of bumps in the road, if you will. The ramp itself in front of the school, if anybody has seen it, is complete. The railings are up. It looks great. The areas around the other doors that they were doing have to be redone a little bit more. I'd say grind a little bit more. I say, wouldn't you say, Kevin?
Hmm.
Yeah, smoothed out, however.
It needs to be addressed. I don't know what the solution necessarily is.
Yeah. There's a little bit that needs to be addressed on some of the other doors yet. And then actually, when I was at the middle school for something else today, it was brought to my attention by Dr. Wheeler, the principal, and he said he had passed on to Damian that right at the base of the new ramp with the filing out there, some of that pavement was actually sinking a little bit, which means it has to be redone so that it's correct. So I'm going to be reaching out. I know that Damian was told by the principal and Damian and I spoke earlier today to reach out to the contractor to get that fixed correctly. But that project is, I'd say otherwise finished with those two, a couple of exceptions. And I think that that's great. I think that the community is going to be able to take advantage of a lot of what the school has to offer, people who weren't able to get in there easily before. I know that the school is very happy with it. I know the nurse is very happy with it, and the principal is happy with it. So does anybody have any questions about that at all going forward or thoughts?
I just have some questions, Jonathan, just because I'm not familiar with ramps or any of this stuff, and it might be questions that other people have in the community. When I see it and when I look at it, I understand there's the two sides. Is that to keep somebody that's in a wheelchair down that trajectory or like, I just want to have an understanding of all the uses, if that makes sense.
So the, the, I assume you've seen it then?
Yes, I actually was at the school today and I got to look at it. It's very nice.
Okay, so the ramp itself is not for the wheelchairs. The wheelchairs can go down the center of the ramp up or back. It's wide enough for a wheelchair to be able to do that independently. That is for the reason we have the railing on both sides like that is if anybody has trouble with balance or uses a walker or another device where they need to hold on to a railing going up on the right or coming down on the left. So you'll see that the railing has the regular rail at the top, and then there's a lower railing as well that comes out. So even if you have children or young kids who have difficulty or something with disability or a senior, for example, or somebody who's low to the ground, they can use that lower railing as well. So you have that lowered long railing going all the way up as well. So that's why you have a railing on both sides, and that's because of the width of it, and also because the way it was designed, there's a slight slope, a very, very slight slope at the outside of the railing to the left and the outside of the railing to the, to the right, and that slight slope slopes in its in towards the ramp as opposed to out because the, the rest of the pavement is higher. So that demarcates that also so that somebody couldn't run off it if they had a wheelchair or a walker or some other device. So it really serves a bunch of different purposes.
All right, thank you. I didn't know if it was a silly question, but I just wanted to have a better understanding of it, and I'm guessing that it only goes that amount of distance because if you're somebody that has mobility issues or maybe you're a little off balance, you're going to have more problems going like up a slant than when you're then hit the, the flat and even ground. Is that correct?
That is, yeah, once you hit the flat surface, once you get to that flat surface point, it's no longer necessary or required.
Okay. Thank you.
It's actually a really good question, oddly enough, right? Because like we always lean towards wheelchairs, and I actually have a really funny video of when it was first completed. Leila was with her one-on-one, and she wanted to use the railing in her wheelchair, and you can see how absolutely ineffective the railing is for a wheelchair user. It's like, kid, just let go of the railing and push the wheels as opposed to. That's not what that's there for.
Yeah.
Well, I saw the picture of your daughter with it, and I was like, is she supposed to like hold both sides and go, I mean, what is she stretching arms strong?
Had, had to try it out, and but yeah, we have a video, and she's like pushing one side and trying to grab with the other, and it's like just, just push your wheels.
So does anyone else have any questions about the middle school? Okay. I'll go to the project grant status now. And there's a lot there, so I'll keep it pretty short. I hope anybody else feel free to chime in. The grant obviously was approved, and we've met the, the people in town who are going to need to help implement the grant or have different components of the grant under their their purview have met. We have another meeting planned for a week from today, actually, at five o'clock to status support to go over where things are at and who's doing what, and the plan right now for some of the major parts of it is Tom Ferry is working with Kevin for the parks and rec component, and in the spring, when the contractor is ready and the ground's warm enough and so forth, they'll be working on putting the walkways into the park areas, and Kevin feel free to comment in a minute on whatever you want for that, too. But I think that'll give people a lot more access, not just to the play area at a couple of the parks, but also to the sitting areas, to the bench areas, which are already accessible for wheelchairs. The same thing for the ramp that's at Town Hall right now will disappear. Hopefully, this will all be done by the end of May. We have until the end of June for these parts of the project, but by the end of May, and that'll become a long winding walkway. As I've always say, ramp will no longer be necessary. There won't be railings necessary anymore in that respect. There'll be benches for people along the way. That'll be putting in there some shrubs. I don't have anything to do with that part of it. But or, or the COD doesn't, but it'll be really nice. Once it's finished and there's some, some fauna in there and things have grown in there and so forth, I think it'll be really aesthetically nice for all of the town's residents to, to go into Town Hall. The actual project for that, once it started, shouldn't take too long. The upper Town Hall will have some rerouting done for a couple of days. So there'll be some, some rerouting up at the door area for a couple of days. Kevin, myself, Jim, Mike, and Tom all met. Kevin, I think Ken, you were there too to talk about the design and how that's going to go and the layout. So you know, that, that, that's something the town will see as well. We're ordering, we're going to be ordering the rubber mats that were part of the grant. This is also for other areas, which we'll get into in a minute. We have a meeting scheduled with our internet provider as of today. Now it is for the second of March to go over accessibility for the town's website. Jim is working on the procuring the contractor that we agreed to work with for the old Town Hall stage as part of this as well. I've just got some estimates for the lavatory electric doors at Town Hall. So go ahead.
Can I interrupt you quick on that?
Yep.
The estimate you got, is it for the doors or only the opening hardware?
I literally just got them ten minutes ago before we came on here. So I haven't even looked at them yet. The full estimates, it's just said estimates for. Okay. And I had actually there are two that came in like six minutes from each other. So.
Those to me, because I'll, I'll, when you're done with your part, I'll kind of just rattle through what Jim and I have been working on.
Absolutely. So you know, those are just some of the parts of it. There's, there's more to it. The, there's, I have the community playground when we get to committee reports, so I'll hold off on that part of it. But you know, when we get the rubber matting, that'll cover areas for the, for the community garden as well. So you know, different parts of the project are, are starting to take shape and come together. Kevin, do you want to add?
Yeah, so just quick, Jim and I went back and we remeasured the new Town Hall bathrooms the other day. I just sent out the drawings for the new partitions for the handicaps. Well, it's going to be all the stalls, but in particular, the handicap accessible stalls. So we're waiting here back on that. Jim had some ideas as far as the doors, so that's why I wanted to hear, well, I want to see what you got, Jonathan, if it's just the door hardware, and then we can purchase the doors separately.
Okay.
So we kind of got that underway. We're going to try to get that rolling sooner than later. Park stuff, we're just waiting on this, the snow kind of just hindered everything that we were going to do. We're going to start laying that out and get them on board to start that if we had breaks in the weather, but now we're going to be it's kind of wet and soupy, so we'll probably wait another least couple of weeks and see what happens before we start doing that.
So yeah, it's moving, it's moving along. I mean.
Yeah, we're putting the pieces together. It's just, yeah. Mostly weather is, is really kind of hindered what we've been able to.
I think just whether, and then even for the indoor stuff, it's, it's construction, getting everything together, put together, stuff like that. But I think probably by the end of March, I imagine a lot of the construction, at least some of it will be started and so forth as well. The project we have until the end of June to do, but because of other things like COVID and so forth, there are opportunities for extension if we need it. We're hoping that we don't. It's possible there might be an extension needed for some of the web stuff, but we'll have to wait and see for that and see how that goes with the current contractor that the town has and what they can provide. But that's the update on that particular grant, so I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Let me just add real quick to that, just to loop Nicole into the website stuff. So we've actually sat down, which then has mostly been Jonathan working on it, but he sent out our website and then like four other towns' websites that our current provider uses and had them do a review on it, and it gave us like points on what's accessible and what's not. And like our website was the worst of the four that they did. But we're trying to when we meet with them next week, it's going to be as like a show, you show us what you can do type of a meeting.
So we did, we did look at, thanks, Kevin. That, that's a good point. We, we did look at the other websites that we looked at were sites that the same company has done and that they say are accessible. The problem is that the company who revise, who is the current vendor for the town uses what are called widgets for their accessibility. So in reality, they're not providing, as far as we know, they're not directly providing an accessible service or resource internally. They're providing this widget that's supposed to do it. And even the other sites that we did were moderate at best. The automated system that we use so far looks at twenty-nine parameters, and it looks at thirty percent of the value of the website. And in every case, at least half of the values didn't make it. So you know, some were better, some were worse, but the average was about fifty percent of the average site was considered accessible, and that's not just for blindness. That's for any type of disability you can think of. So it looks at the size of the lettering. It looks at the brightness. It looks at the way things filter, the way things move around, the way things layer. It looks at all different types of things. It can, can they be used with a mouse versus a handheld device versus some other device if you don't have dexterity in your hands or you have to use other devices instead, such as a stick or something. So it looks at all of these different parameters. So in our conversation that we have in, on, on March second, we really want to hear from the developer what else they can offer, what they can do if, if they can enhance any of this through them directly other than the widget. The other thing we may look at is limiting, for example, the number of people who are administrators to the site. So it may be right now that a lot of people who are posting to the site will no longer be able to do it, but it would just be a few people through the town. It could be, for example, Mark and the Board of Selectmen's Office who have the access and everything will have to be designated to go through, and they may have to go through additional training for web support for assess of how to, how to support things and put it in for accessible resource and so forth as well. So there's still, there's a lot to unpack there and a lot to work on, but that's in process. So I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on that. So I have five is new business. But what I thought I would do, because I made a mistake, and I put committee reports under new business. So if it's okay with everybody and if we can get a motion, I'd like to go back.
No, you didn't, Jonathan.
I'm sorry?
It's correct by itself.
I thought I had it under new business, no?
You have five is new business, discuss upcoming budget request, and then six is committee reports if time permits.
No, I know, but I meant to put it under old business is what I'm trying to say back further.
I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter that much. So if we go to the budget, because that's the next thing coming up. I'm sitting down with Mike next week to discuss our budget and where we're at with it. I think that the feeling of the town is to level fund the COD at this point, all the way across the board for everything. That would be our expense side and this, the three thousand dollar side that I receive. I've thought of asking for something different, but I think this year it makes more sense, given the, the constraints the town is under and given that I think we've all heard from Mike that the budget is going to be tight this year and that there's a lot of unknown at this point that we keep the budget the same. The only difference will be it's just a new year. And I just want to get everybody's thought on that and get any input from, from all of you before I go ahead and put the budget sheet together to, to send over to you now.
Do you feel like your needs are being met? As far as only being provided for your aid and, and all of that, is there any adjustments that need to be made there?
So the, the answer to that is there was a thousand dollars allotted for that. And especially with some of the work that's been going on in the background, it's still more than a thousand dollars. And I know I could easily go back and ask the COD to authorize an additional expense so that we could take that to the Board of Selectmen. But for this year, I didn't do that. I've eaten part of the cost for Justina. And I've also told Mike the other day that I'm going to be speaking to our accountant Monday so that I can get Justina set up for the rest of the year. So that, that thousand dollars is frankly going to be used with a lot of the stuff going forward that other things that I've been looking at and potentially will be involved in. And I'll need her assistance for it, so that's going to be used going forward. I do think that next year I'm not going to do the same thing. I'm going to start her from day one in July. And if it means, means that we need to go back for a supplemental budget request because of that, then yes, we will need to do that next year. But I felt that this year I didn't want to, I didn't, you know, things were tough. Things were tight all the way around. I was trying to be understanding.
Stop, stop. It's the, don't. We're, I've, a lot of us here are in volunteer positions. As a volunteer, it's, you're supposed to volunteer your time. You're not supposed to volunteer your money. It's a requirement by the law, and it's part of what we're doing on this committee is to, to make sure that those things are paid for. You shouldn't be financially funding your assistant for town-related work. It's, I know last year was a little different when we put in our budget request. It was kind of a, a larger number. It was a, it was, you know, a big jump from what you originally were allocated, but I think if we put in a small ask and you with the, you know, understanding that the majority of that money is for your assistant, then the town has to approve it to some, to some extent. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's unrealistic or a burden on the taxpayers, given, you know, kind of what, what's going on right now with what you're doing.
So I think to answer, to answer you, Kevin, the first half of the year, for example, the total amount for Justina was putting up here, six hundred and I believe six hundred ninety-two dollars.
Today?
Correct. Yes. Yep. But I also knew that, you know, come going forward in January for the rest of the year, you know, that's the other six months, that figure is going to be higher. That figure is going to be close to a thousand dollars in itself probably, which is what was allocated. So would I, I mean, what I would say for the budget, if we were to ask, do it, do an ask for anything, it would be that we increase the, those, those expenses from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for next year.
Which I think is reasonable. I think that's a reasonable request to present to the accountant and the town administrator.
Especially how, you know, every, I mean, yearly, everything potentially goes up, right? So I'm sure her services that she provides goes up and things should kind of level out that way.
They, I mean, they do. The more with, the more we do, and the more I do, the more she has to be involved. It's just that simple.
Yeah, I totally agree with what Kevin was saying about volunteers and that. I mean, um, we shouldn't have to be paying for things, especially things that you need to do your job. And you can't do it otherwise if you don't have it.
And I, and you know, look into, you all know, I know that, and I think you all know that I believe that, and I feel that strongly, too. I also know that there, you know, I've, I've also felt strongly that the COD and the coordinator needed to have something that we could show the town that we're doing. And some things that we can say to the town, this is what's happening. This is where money is going. This is what it is. So yeah, you know, fifty percent of the stuff that I do at least is, is working with individual residents, and that's part of what I do. But the, the public doesn't see any of that any more than they see it with other specific individuals in town and the work they do, you know, individually with residents. For something like what we do, what the public hangs their hat on, I think for the most part, unless they need an individual's service or resource is what they see outwardly, the ramp, the walkways, the website, the elevator, not the elevators, the, the electric doors, things like that. And you know, knowing that we got the pushback that we did, I think I just personally felt it was
now.
You know, I know you may not agree with that.
I don't agree with it at all. And then we went from what, so what is level funding would be what? What's that number?
Level funding is a total of, we have a total of five thousand dollars.
Okay, so that, and that's what we got approved for last year was five thousand?
Yeah, because the five thousand dollars was one thousand dollars for supplies and equipment. One thousand hours for Justina and three thousand dollars for Jonathan.
All right, so three thousand dollars is your stipend.
Correct.
And then a thousand for your aid assistant.
Right, and because.
Let me write this down because I just want to think about. I mean, I don't think, I don't think going, asking for a five hundred dollar increase for your assistant is unrealistic or unreasonable by any means. And what you're saying about what we're doing is irrelevant. The town needs to provide you that service as, you know, essentially an employee of the town. The only other thing that you could flirt with is like, and I know, so we used a little bit of money for Theo's Garden Project, right?
Correct.
The only other thing that you could do, like if you want to be super conservative, but I don't think it's necessarily is if we five hundred of that other thousand that was supplies or whatever we called it.
We, we, we could. There was, there's two hundred dollars being spent for, and there was a backlog because of COVID. There's two hundred dollars that's being spent for the Braille labeling that's going to go on the two boxes down at lowered, the lower level of Town Hall, those outdoor boxes. So for the labeling that's going to go on that, that's two hundred dollars as well. But we haven't gotten that invoice yet because we haven't gotten the product yet.
So why is the COD paying for that?
For those Braille labels because that's part of our budget.
Why? It's required. Like we chose and we voted as a, as a committee to help like a project like Theo's because that was like something given back to the community. Why are we paying for requirements? That should, that should have been included in the budget item for the boxes themselves.
I don't remember who it was that told me off the top of my head that we would need to allocate that. In fact, I was actually, I think, told that because the National Braille Bus didn't accept an invoice. They didn't do invoicing. I was supposed to put it on a credit card and then submit that for repayment. That was by Selectmen's Office.
So Jonathan, what's the balance in Justina's, the money for Justina?
That's right now, that money is still there. There's still that thousand dollars there, Ken.
Yeah, I, as much, if I remember correctly, we had asked for more money than a thousand dollars for Justina. And at the time, I think the FinCon, maybe even the Board of Selectmen voted to reduce it. But it was my understanding that if Justina, I mean, the town is obligated to pay Justina for the work that she does for you. And we had said that it's going to be more than a thousand dollars. We're going to have to go back to the Board of Selectmen or whatever and ask for additional money, and they would have to come up with that money. The problem that we have right now is that it's middle of February and we haven't spent any of this money. And now we're going to be asking for an increase. So I think that that's going to be a little difficult.
Well, the ace up is sleeve, so to speak, and I, I make sure it said that you've paid six hundred and ninety-two dollars out of your pocket. And if anything, you can actually, you can put in for a reimbursement for that, like, and I think you should. I would rather see you put in a reimbursement for that six ninety-two, and then we run out of money and have to ask for more than you try to use up the thousand between now and June thirtieth. I think that's what, that's what should be, be done.
I can do that.
Like, you know, it's like, this happens to me, yeah, too. And like, it's one thing, like, so just as an example, like for Parks and Rec, there's been stupid little things that I need. That's like a ten dollar item that I'll just go buy because it's easier to just buy it and be done with it, then go through all the forms and submit an invoice. Six hundred and ninety-two dollars is a lot of money. Put in for a reimbursement, and then, then you'll have, you know, only three hundred and whatever, eight dollars left. And then start paying Justina regularly, run it empty, and then we'll request more, and then it justifies it. I mean, that, that's the thing. It's like, I understand your, your intention was good, but you kind of, it's almost like Ken saying, it's like you shot yourself in the foot a little bit.
Nicole, any thoughts?
No, I, I agree. That sounds like it's going to be the best, best way to go about it because like Ken said, it just sounds like they're going to say, well, why haven't you gone through this money and you're asking for more money? When that's not, that's not the case. This is, we're actually trying, we were trying, you were trying to do something good, and then we've come up with a new plan, so I think that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I will take care of that tomorrow, actually.
So Jonathan, going back to what you originally said, maybe Kevin said it. I think we ought to, for that account, we ought to ask for fifteen hundred for next year since I think we're going to end up spending about that this year if everything is submitted, so I think we ought to submit for that particular item, it should be fifteen hundred dollars. I know it's not level funding, but it's an expense in the town. The town needs to know what they're going to have to spend, so they gave us a thousand dollars for that account. We knew it was going to cost more than that if everything was being submitted. The town just has to wake up and, and realize that it's going to cost more than a thousand dollars, and let's know about it now rather than have to go back to the town and ask for more money, so.
So then, yep, so then, so then let me ask a question. We have right now, we have the three thousand dollars for my stipend or salary.
Yeah.
We have this thousand dollars, and we have that thousand dollars for supplies and equipment. Six ninety-two less a thousand is three hundred and eight dollars. But we still have that. But we still have that thousand for supplies and equipment.
No, we don't.
Well, let's go ahead.
Yeah, we paid for Theo's.
Last, no, I know, I was, I wasn't finished.
Okay.
So I was going to say, we had the thousand for supplies and equipment, less Theo's, Theo's amount, which I think was um. I can't pull it up this second.
It was three hundred and something.
Seventy, three seventy-five, I think.
Something like that, yeah.
Yep. And. I didn't even do anything yet because I'm not even counting the other two hundred yet because that hasn't been paid for. So if I don't count that and then.
If it's, if it was approved in a meeting, it's gone. I mean, you gotta. Whether or not it comes off your ledger, it's, it's, that money's gone, so you still got to account for that.
No, I understand. So. I guess what I'm saying.
Not to like, I don't want to drag this conversation on. We don't even need to talk about supplies and equipment. That's irrelevant.
Okay.
In, in comparison to what we're talking about for your assistant.
Right.
You know what the line item is, like what the, what number that, that is?
I can't, I can't pull it up and listen to it, Kevin, while. Last year's is yes, this year's no, because I didn't put it together.
Still going to be the same. It's still going to be the same account.
Yeah, it's in Dropbox. I'll, I'll show you where it is afterwards if you want, I'll.
Well, no, because if we're going to make a, a motion, I want to make a motion that we increase that line item. And know exactly what it's called and what it is.
Okay, that's in our Dropbox folder.
Okay, let me, give me like, if you guys want to keep talking about it, let me.
A little bit messy, but it's there.
Yeah, so Jonathan, the flyer, the flyer that we sent out, did that come out of this fiscal year's budget?
No, that came out of the last year's budget.
Okay.
It wasn't done until July, but it was invoiced for last year.
Okay.
Kevin, do you want me to go look for it?
Um, I just, I'm like. I'm just trying to find something where you change the Dropbox, why, that's the easiest way for me to get into it. Minute now.
Yeah, and I was gonna, I was gonna fill this in with, with Justina tomorrow. I just, I don't remember which line it is specifically. I think it's a fifty-one or something like fifty-one hundred in that range or something, but.
Just waiting for it to load. There we go. Oh my God, it gave me the whole. It gave me the whole town budget. I don't want that. ADA budget. Alright, salary benefits. What would that be considered? Cause like, so the, the, the one that's pulling up is the twenty twenty. And there's a bunch of line items in there.
Twenty twenty-one should be in there.
The twenty twenty-two is what we got right now, fiscal year twenty-two as well, uh, we're taking.
Alright, hold on, I'm finding, alright, I got F Y twenty twenty-two. Here we go. So that's odd because. Yeah, so it's actually, it's all under one account.
It doesn't have line items?
But it's, well, it does, but it, it's, it's just eight. ADA Coordinator and then it says personal expenses sub something, I can't read it.
Can you read the figure?
Every, it's um, ADA Coordinator was at two thousand. See, this doesn't even look familiar. And then personal expenses two thousand.
That, that can't be right because we went up to three thousand.
Yeah.
For the ADA Coordinator.
Looking at, it's um, F Y twenty-two budget document, master ADA Coordinator, five forty-nine. Yeah, in the, in budgets and plans, Jonathan.
Yep.
There's an ADA Budget Proposed Draft for twenty twenty-two. That has time tracking and, and this hasn't been touched since last January. So this is not updated at all.
There should have been another one put in there after we reviewed everything with.
Yeah, I'm trying to look through the main folders.
I wonder if some stuff's just not updating because we've put everything in there.
Yeah, like all this stuff that's in this budgets and plans folders.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty or earlier.
Great.
Alright, well, for the sake of.
I've, I've find this, I'll find it with, with Justina tomorrow.
For the sake of.
And.
Time, I, I'll make a motion that we increase the line item pertaining to Jonathan's assistant to fifteen hundred dollars.
There's a motion on the floor to increase the administrative. Uh, expense for Jonathan's aide. By five hundred dollars, is there a second?
I'll second that, Nicole Mello.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Kevin?
I.
Nicole?
Hi.
And Jonathan stepping down votes, I, um, I will, just for. Um, everybody to have it separately, I will make sure that I have Justina pull the right stuff there tomorrow. And I will forward that to everyone so that you can all see what the actual final figures look like.
Thank you.
So that, um, that way everybody can, can have that to have a comparison against it. Because that should be there. I don't know whether, it sounds like the Dropbox hasn't updated at all, um, from what Kevin is saying. And on my end, it's here, so. Um, we'll pull it and send it all out. So thank you for that. I appreciate it, everybody, and. I'll leave it that, I'll leave it that. Um, the next thing is the community garden. Um, Kevin, do you want to talk about the community garden?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, um, I don't know if you got to see any of the posts that we did on the C O D page, Nicole, but like. Um, so last Saturday, Theo completed his um, garden beds. They came out so, so good. So we did kind of just a final walkthrough with him, just making sure every, all the measurements were, final measurements were right and the spacing was good. Uh, Mr. Ferry was there, Ken was there with us, so we're just kind of going over like a little bit of fine tuning that needs to be done. Uh, Tom has a little bit of uh, stone dust to put down, like. Kind of on the sides of the bed so that we can fit the mats and then, um, then we'll be good to go, but. Um, yeah, if you get a chance and you can kind of creep over to the. C O D Facebook page, there's a bunch of pictures of him and his other scouts, um, helping them do the beds. You, you just did a fantastic job.
I drive by every day and I always look over there to see if there's anything new and I saw the beds over there.
So and actually too, um, I was, I, I was talking to uh, the building commissioner, uh, Jim. Uh, when I met up for the bathrooms, I think on like Tuesday, and he said that, um, he, they were picking out some lumber too with, with the, um. Building department from Bristol Plymouth and there uh, should be completing the ramp to the shed this week also, so. That's one more thing to check off the list, so it's like literally them getting the beds filled. Apps and will, that, that, that project's going to be in good shape.
And he did a good job. They even sanded it along the edges. They're going to sand it again in the spring. But they did that so that there's no splinter or anything or, you know, limited splintering and so forth as well too, so. Um, and he did it when it was cold. That's, that was pretty impressive when it was really cold out there. They were out there doing it. So, you know, and I think that'll be good. I hope that people take advantage of it when it comes plenty of time for the garden and, and time to work it. Um, the next thing I have on here is town policies and we talked about this. Before. There, for the town policies, there's, I, I want to review the town policies and procedures. Um, that was something that. Uh, was started before. When um, Jen and Jocelyn were, were working on that and putting some material together. And we've never gotten back to it and it's really more about looking at the policies and procedures to make sure they have the right language for. What, what the town needs to have in there for ADA responsibility for. Whether it's the hiring policies and procedures for different things, whether it's the different committees. Uh, policies and procedures, it's just making sure the language is in everything. And I can do it myself. I could do with Justina, but I didn't know if one of you wanted to, to do that with me, um. As a subcommittee or not.
Jonathan, I, I don't mind doing that. Since, you know, I've worked on some of those policies and stuff, so I don't mind uh, sitting down with you and going over uh, the different policies and stuff.
Okay, so maybe you and I can then set some time aside and go over, go with that in the next month and.
Sure.
Uh, get back to everybody and, and where it's at. I know that everything has been redone. I have the revised policies and revised procedures. And again, Ken, it's mostly just making sure that the right languages and everything as well. So if we, if we could do that, that would be great. And. Emergency preparedness, um. We, we met a couple of times not too long ago and, um. I'm in the process of hope, I'm hoping to hear, and I mentioned this before, I think I'm hoping to hear. That the state will have a couple of wheelchairs for uh, emergency preparedness, um. Everything again with covid got, got put back. Uh, they may have two wheelchairs that they can, they can, they can provide for us, which would be excellent. I'm just beginning to put together the, the process for putting together a disability registry. And we talked at the last meeting about who would need to have access to that registry and in essence, it would be myself. The uh, Health Department uh, through Todd, the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. Um, and those are the only individuals that would need to know who is on the disability registry. We talked about. Ways to make sure that we reach out to people with disability through the reverse nine one one or the code red system as well. Um, and whether or not individuals would need. To have somebody go knock on their door potentially if they, if they're not able to use the code red system, for example, the reverse nine one one system. So we're just putting that together. I've asked uh, the chiefs and Todd to each give me a. A small amount of questions that they think should be asked on that. Form that we can put out there for residents and um, have people fill out if they'd like. My hope is that when we have our next emergency preparedness meeting. I have their forms together so that we have a rough draft to look at. And then we can finalize it and then it's going to be a question of how we get it out there and that will probably be through. The town's website, through our Facebook page, um, any, any of the other Facebook pages we have as well. Through um, Council on Aging, through Veterans Agent, whatever way we can to let people know that. Uh, if they'd like to be on the disability registry, this is how we'll go about it. But the actual registry itself will be maintained. I think we've all agreed. It will be maintained by. Uh, me as the coordinator or whoever is doing the coordinator in the future going forward. And that then information will always be updated and then provided, updated annually and provided to the other folks that I just mentioned. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Okay, um, other than that, for now, I thought if we set the next three meeting dates, which, um. I'm going to stick to, as I said earlier, for the first Thursday of the month at four thirty.
I'm Jonathan. I know that we provoked, proposed this a while back and then like everything. But is anyone interested in meeting in person again, um?
Yes.
I don't know if that's going to make cases skyrocket because that's what happened last time. We were like, let's meet again and then everything was not good. Um, so I, I would like to meet in person. I think that, um, it, it's just easier. It's, I feel like things just get done quicker.
I'm okay with it. I'm perfectly okay with it. Um, I can also make sure that, um. Whether it's from Justina or somebody from the Board of Selectmen's Office, if there's documents to be prepared and so forth. Since I, I mean, one of the things that I don't like with Zoom is here is that if I want to share something, I can't. It's really hard for me. To pull up things and share and then listen to it while I'm trying to talk at the same time. But it's easier if I can give people documents physically look at. So, you know, I can work with the Board of Selectmen's Office to have things prepared too, so yes.
I mean. If it's small stuff, because there's, there's only, right now, there's only four of us. It's.
Yep.
Not like a huge deal. If it's like you want to print someone out, just let me know. I'll print it out like the night before. It's fine. I think though we should, I, I, I would like to, and granted, like even today, like we don't have any commu- um. Community input or anything like that, but I think it's nice to keep it as a hybrid one. To have the reporting, to go back and review, but then too, it does help, you know. And help invite the public because some people just can't make it out, but I.
No, Kevin, are you, if we, if we do in person, I was going to ask if we did in person to do a hybrid version, are you able to, to still host it?
Yeah, I'll just bring my laptop and I can host the Zoom. That's what I do for parks and for, and for, um. Open space right now is I just bring my laptop with me and we'd run.
Do we need to do anything with cable that way or anything?
We're not going to be live broadcasted, we're strictly just going to record, so it goes on the YouTube.
Alright, and if somebody is on your laptop who wants to speak, we'd all be able to hear it, I assume, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Ken, what are your thoughts?
I think it's, it's a good idea. I know that, uh, for some people. Especially since we're Commission on Disability, some people they may only be able to do Zoom. Obviously, we can, we can do, we can meet in person. The governor has extended the, uh, hopefully we won't have to utilize it, but the governor has extended. Supposed to end by April first that we could not use just Zoom, like we're doing right now. It's been extended to July fifteenth. Uh, however, I'm not opposed to meeting in person and maybe have to be at prime time depending upon the schedule of other meetings. Do we know if there's any other group that meets on Thursday, on the first Thursday of the month?
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know for the purposes of Zoom. For this Zoom link, there weren't, but I don't know about anything else. I can check with Leanne on Monday.
No, it shouldn't be because we set our placeholder for the first. Um, Thursday of the month, so we should be fine.
Yeah.
I'll be perfectly honest with you. I prefer to meet at prime time.
I think we set it for prime time.
It's, it's kind of, it's just a. I, I like the space better than Old Town Hall, to be honest with you, for this stuff.
I'm quite sure we did set it for prime time, but I will check with Leanne. In fact, I'll send her an email soon as we get off this meeting right now. So that I, I don't forget. Since I tend to do that lately.
Yeah, and I guess if the first Thursday of the month is okay, then we should put in for the rest of the.
Yeah, it's already on, it is, I know for, I know for Zoom, it's on the calendar for the rest of the year and I think it is for prime time too, Ken.
Okay, that's good.
And that's what I'm going to double check with her, but I think it is.
And I, I just think we have to be a, a little bit more consistent with our meetings. Uh, so I think if we're on the first Thursday of the month, I know it, I have a lot of other meetings I have to attend to, so I know beforehand. Uh, first Thursday of the month works for me, so.
I hear that loudly.
And we will need that, you know, we'll do that for the rest of fiscal year anyway.
And, and I hear it loudly and, um. I'm, I'm, I will make it happen, for sure.
So just real quick, it's, it's in the meeting calendar, so it's already set up for.
Yep.
Four thirty on March third is the next one. It is set up though, the location is at Old Town Hall, so we'll have to have Leanne, um.
Okay.
And we'd have to change the agenda too. For example, this agenda says that's the upper level of Old Town Hall.
Yeah.
And it says this will only be Zoom, so it's kind of confusing, so we have to be a little more specific with that, so.
I can do that.
Yeah, I like prime time. We've, I've had capital outlay meetings there, also Lions Club meets there. So I think it's a great place uh, to meet since, especially since we're a smaller group. Bigger groups like the Planning Board is probably going to. Because the planning board is probably gonna dominate the Old Town Hall and other, yeah. I know the Board of Health, I think, meets on a Thursday. I don't think it's the first Thursday. I'm not sure. Uh, but prime time might be ideal for us, so.
All right, I'm gonna send this out as soon as we are finished.
Yeah.
And then she'll, she always responds quickly, so I'm probably no 8 o'clock Monday morning if it's available.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there anything else anybody wants to bring up under new business?
So. Don't we have to vote on the whole budget, though? I mean, we voted on one part of it, right, the $1,500, but. I think what we, what Jonathan has to submit to Mike is. I recommend the, the commissions recommend it, not me, you guys.
Right.
Commission's recommendation on, on a budget. So I know we voted for that one item. I think we have to also vote the other items.
So.
Supplies, as well as Jonathan.
We do, we do, so. Um, what I was gonna, you're right, and. Does it make sense to vote on the, you guys haven't seen the physical budget yet? Um, if you want to vote now for the budget. Um, for level funding with the exception of that increase, because that's what it's gonna be. Then we can vote on that now. And that's, that's exactly what's gonna be submitted.
Yeah, I think we need to vote on it. These, all the departments have submitted their budgets. We're one of two.
One of two that haven't, correct.
That haven't, and I just want to resolve it now so that when you meet with Mike, he knows what our budget, what we're looking for.
All right. So can I have a motion from? Someone for the floor?
I can't make the motion, so.
What are we motioning?
The motion should be, um, to approve level funding for the Commission on Disabilities budget. With the exception of, I'm not sure what the line item is called, uh, but basically Justina is.
Right, a $500 administrative is increased for administrative support.
Okay. So somebody can just say so move if they're in agreement with that motion.
So move. It's like, I can't repeat all that.
Yeah.
So there's, so there.
I, I will second.
Yeah.
So, so the motion on the floor is to level fund the Commission on Disability with the exception of asking for a $500 increase. For administrative support for the C O D Coordinator.
Yeah.
Do I have, and we have a second on that?
Yes, Kevin's second.
Yep, yep, I had something to talk into my ear. I'm sorry at the same time.
That's fine.
So I will, uh, move the question and do a roll call. Nicole?
Hi.
Kevin?
I.
And Jonathan stepping down. I, guys have it unanimously. Thank you very much.
I would, yeah, I would just suggest. Because, uh, the Board of Selectmen is gonna meet with all the different committees and departments in, in March, we're gonna have three meetings. I don't know when, what Commission on Disability is gonna be, but I would suggest, uh, that we all attend. Obviously, I gotta attend, but you guys attend and strongly advocate for the increase for Justina, as well as when. This comes up with FinCom, this is gonna come up with the Finance Committee and they're gonna want to. Find out our justification for the increase. I think we have good justification for it.
Okay.
I think it's important that we all. Attend these meetings and be united, uh, in our position.
Okay, thank you. And I will be submitting this to the town accountant on Monday and to Mike. And then, as I said, I'm sitting down with Mike next week, um, to go over this as well. Actually, I believe it is now Tuesday. We're sitting down. We changed the date. So that will all be done.
Good.
That's it. Anybody have any last minute, anything they'd like to add or ask, or do we have anyone from the public with us?
Let's check. Nope. I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn at 5:27.
Thank you all very much, and I'm sorry, I'm so distracted right now. I really apologize for that.
Yeah. Is there a second on that motion?
I second that, Nicole Mello.
Moving the motion. Nicole?
Nicole, second motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, I know, I know.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was moving the motion. Nicole said, I, Kevin?
I.
And Jonathan, I. And we have free eyes.
Yeah. Good night, everybody. Everybody enjoyed a long weekend. If you got Monday off anyway, I don't know if you may not, but. Enjoy a long week.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys. Thanks for hosting, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Good night.